We will start today with a reading from Saint Paul's letter to the Christians in Rome. Saint Paul's letter to the Romans, chapter 14, verse 1 through verse 9. Romans 14:1-9. Again, Romans 14:1-9. And later on afterwards, you can also read this. If you if you find something interesting, if you hear something interesting, you can pursue it further and read it for yourself. Romans 14:1-9. Let us pray in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Welcome anyone who is weak in faith, but not for disputes over opinions. One person believes that one may eat anything, while the weak person eats only vegetables. The one who eats must not despise the one who abstains, and the one who abstains must not pass judgment on the one who eats, for God has welcomed him. Who are you to pass judgment on someone else's servant? Before his own master, he stands or fails, or falls, I'm sorry, and he will be upheld, for the Lord is able to make him stand. For one person considers one day more important than another, while another person considers all days alike. Let everyone be fully persuaded in his own mind. Whoever observes the day observes it for the Lord, and also whoever eats for the Lord, since he gives thanks to God; while whoever abstains abstains for the Lord and gives thanks to God. None of us lives for oneself, and no one dies for oneself; for if we live, we live for the Lord; and if we die, we die for the Lord. So then, whether we live or we die, we are the Lords; for this is why Christ died and came to life, that he might be Lord of both the dead and the living.
So dear Lord, thank you once again for the revelation of your word, for the revelation of your intention, for bringing us to faith in you. We ask that you may continue to work on our minds and on our hearts, work on our enthusiasm to help you bring your word to the knowledge of our world, for other people to get to know you. We ask you to clarify our minds as we dedicate ourselves to study your word today, and bless this session. May it be fruitful, may it be inspiring. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Okay. Now, I love that reading because it made my job a little bit easier, my job in telling people and trying to promote an understanding of Lenten practices and the help that the church gives us. And the many practices that we have are only a help, to show us the way, to show us how we can become creative. We should take what the church gives us and be creative in our own personal lives, in our relationship with God, because this relationship is not a relationship, the relationship you have with God, that we have with God, is not the church's relationship as such. The church stepped in to help us know and have that relationship. It's like the church introduced us to our loved one. The church made the match. And we come to know Jesus, we have to then take it to the nth level. Okay? We have to take it to the deepest level. We have to develop that relationship. It's your relationship with Christ. It's not mine after we have worshiped, after we have celebrated Mass and done everything in group. When you go home, it is your relationship with a spirit, with a God who is spirit, a God who is reaching you in many ways. So take it and develop it in your, make it personal, and make it your way. This is the way, if you want to lay down to pray, lay down to pray. If you want to kneel, kneel to pray. Don't do it for anybody to see. You don't need anybody to see that before you are satisfied that you are considered a Christian, because that's not the goal. The goal is your personal relationship with Christ. And whatever you want to do to deepen that relationship, that's what spirituality is about. Now, religion moves, faith moves from religion and becomes personal and becomes a spirituality. That is how you enjoy Jesus Christ in your life. Okay? So here we are again. And this time around, we are going to talk about, we're going to continue to talk about the Constitution of Christianity. We have finished talking about the prologue, or the preamble, or the introduction part. The introduction part is what we said was the Beatitudes. The Beatitudes, we come to know that the Beatitudes spell out the lifestyle of Christianity, or the lifestyle of heaven. This is a heavenly lifestyle. Peacemaking is a heavenly lifestyle. Being merciful is a heavenly lifestyle. Doing justice, hunger and thirst for righteousness, which is the same word as justice, we came to know about this in our mission. That's a lifestyle of heaven. So if you want to ask somebody, if somebody wants to, you can, if somebody asks you, "What is heaven like?", point to one of these things. They are. If you are merciful to someone, the person feels it and the person experiences it, that's a taste of heaven. That's a taste of heaven. If someone experiences peace, you make peace with somebody and the person feels like a load has been lifted off the person's head, that's what heaven is. That's what, heaven is a condition when we live at peace and in harmony with God, totally, I mean perfectly. That is why there's the difference between heaven and where we are right now. Where we are right now, we just catch the glimpse of it. We taste it every now and then, but then it's not stable. It's not stable. Okay? So the lifestyle of heaven is very practical than we think it is. The lifestyle of heaven is not in the air. It's not some head splitting, something. It's practical, it's concrete. We know what it is. Being merciful, being kind, being, doing justice, that's the lifestyle of heaven. That's it. So we studied that in the preamble, and now we are going to take the articles. So in every constitution, you have the preamble. I use the United States Constitution as an example. The preamble says, "We, the people, to form a perfect union," and all that, blah, blah, blah. So that's the preamble. And then it goes to the articles. But the articles describe how, a lot of things. In the U.S. Constitution, the articles start describing the government, what a government is, how the government is formed, how we run ourselves as a democratic nation. So they start introducing the president, the legislature, the executive, and the judiciary. They start describing all these folks. So also here, in the first, in the article, Article 1, we start discussing who we are, who Jesus's followers are. You see, Jesus was teaching his followers about this lifestyle, that is what this constitution that's going to guide their lifestyle. But in it, it describes who they are, who they are, how they are considered. So we're going to talk about that. We're going to talk about who they are. And that's where we read that text that says, "You are the salt of the earth, you are the light of the world," okay, "light of humanity." So that describes the identity of anyone who follows Jesus Christ. You think of yourself as salt and light for the world, okay? You have a goal, you have your identity and your purpose. So then we'll talk, that's Article 1. Then we'll also talk about Article 2. So today, this is what we are going to do. We're going to do Article 1 and Article 2. Because these two together belong to one unit. In fact, some scholars, other biblical scholars, consider the whole thing as the introduction, the Beatitudes, who we are, as salt and light, and the lifestyle that has to be upgraded. Some scholars in their books have written it as the introduction. All of that is introduction. And they start with the articles from verse 21, chapter 5, verse 21. But I'd like to look at it this way because, because for me, this actually, it's like a midway. It brings the Beatitudes, it unites the Beatitudes and the rest of the book. These two things, who we are, and the lifestyle that needs to be upgraded. So in the Article 2, Jesus describes the law and the prophets. And I'm going to tell you what the law, if you hear, you will hear this again and again, "law and prophets," the law and the prophets. Jesus explained to them the law and the prophets. Saint Paul explained to them the law and the prophets. When you hear this, they always go together. That represents the Old Testament. That represents their old law, okay, the law and the prophets. Those are just two sections. I'll tell you why they just use the two sections. There are three sections in the Old Testament. The Hebrew Bible, in Judaism, in their Bible, there are three sections, the law, the prophets, and the writings. But they always put, always just mention these two to represent all of them. So we'll talk about that. But that is the lifestyle. The Old Testament is described in Article 2 of the Christian Constitution because they want us to know what lifestyle are we upgrading in Christianity, okay? Or what perspective, what are we, what perspective? We bring our Christian lens, right? We bring our Christian lens. But what are we looking at to clarify, for the lens to clarify? It is the Old Testament that our lens, Christian lens, clarifies. It is the Old Testament that Jesus came to clarify, to deepen, to fulfill, what he himself would say, "I came not to abolish the law, but to fulfill it," okay? So this is the substance that we are going to take, that Jesus is going to take in his teaching in the Constitution. These are the teachings Jesus is going to take and upgrade them. So we are now going to live according to strictly the Ten Commandments. There is a way that Christians live that fulfills not just the Ten Commandments, but many other things that the Ten Commandments don't have. So we are not directly keeping the Ten Commandments. We don't, our focus is not there. Our focus is in the Christian way of living in a way that will take the, that will already take care of the Ten Commandments, and then take care of other things. Because there's an upgrade of the Ten Commandments. Jesus upgrades the Ten Commandments. He didn't throw them away. So no one should go about, "Oh Father, thus I shall not kill, thus I shall not kill," and then try to beat your fellow brother or sister about that. Be careful because "thus I shall not kill" is understood in the Christian Testament in a different way, in a much deeper way, in a way that will make us sometimes even kill without knowing that we are killing. So that's very important, and I'm happy for the text that we use for the prayer, right? So somebody is a vegetarian, somebody is the, we all can live in a Catholic church. We all can be members of the same church, and one person is eating meat and the other is not eating meat. We can all exist together. So these are our, these are like little syllables that we'll be looking at, Articles 1 and Article 2. And I think that this is going to help each and every one of us. You should get this clear in your mind, what is it? Article 1 of the Christian Constitution, you know, is about salt and light, that we, describes our identity, who we are, salt and light. Matthew, chapter 13. So we start with Matthew, chapter 13, Matthew, chapter 5, verse 13. And that's what talks about Article 1. So this is, this Article 1 of the Constitution says, "Okay, I made a little mistake." So the last part will be Article 3, the Constitution, Article 3 instead, because Articles 1 and 2 are salt and light. So Article 3 actually is the law, the Old Testament, how we upgrade the Old Testament. So let's go forward. Salt of the earth is Article 1, Matthew, chapter 5, verse 13. "You are the salt of the earth." And it goes on to say, "But if salt loses its taste, with what can it be seasoned? It is no longer good for anything except to be thrown out and trodden on the foot by men." "You are the salt of the earth; but if salt loses its taste, with what can it be seasoned? It is no longer good for anything but to be thrown away. It will have no use, no more use for people." Now, the other Gospels that you find this in is Mark, chapter 9, verse 49 through 50. And then you can find it also in Luke, chapter 14, verse 34 through 35. It's only Matthew that puts it in a very structured form that we are able to call it Article 1 of the Christian Constitution. So that's why we're taking Matthew, chapter 5, verse 13. Now, when it says we are the salt of the earth, we just, we only have to, it's very easy to interpret this. You only have to consider what we use salt for in our world today. And, but in the Jewish world, in the ancient Jewish world, or in the time when Jesus was doing this teaching, salt was used in many ways, like we use them today, to flavor food. Salt was also used, like how it's used in my country right now, in many, in the ancient times when they had no refrigerators, they had no, anything to, gadgets to cool things to that icy level. Salt was used as a preservative. And in my home, we do that too. When the fishermen come ashore and they have their fish, a lot of fish, and many of the villages, fishing villages that don't have electricity, they use salt. My people use salt so much that there is some kind of fish, tilapia, that can be salinated and it can be kept for months, and it's still good. Okay? So salt was used as a preservative. And then it is also used for purification purposes. It is used to purify other substances. Salt is used for that. And then salt is also used in ritual sacrifices, in rituals. Even in my home too, in a traditional African religion, sometimes you go to the priestess's home to tell them about some problem, something, or a spirit haunting you in your house, they can give you salt. Or they can ask you to bring salt, and they'll perform something for you and make some concoction for you and tell you, "Just go and sprinkle it around your house," you know, "to drive away the evil spirits." Apparently, the evil spirits don't like salt. Okay? So that's their belief, that's their belief. Don't criticize them. The Old Testament has so many things that we will call cuckoo today. I mean, we read through that, but we don't pay attention. We just read over it. But you get people sprinkling blood on people, blood of goats and lamb. You take it, they slaughter the sheep in the temple, and then they will use the blood and sprinkle it on the people. And then they will smear the blood on the altar, which means the people and the altar have become one by means of the blood. Okay? I don't know how that temple will smell like when they kill goats and sheep and lamb in the temple and burn it on the altar and let the smoke, just the smoke of goat burning. I don't know. Okay? So many of these things are very, very traditional, ancient practices. All that is spiritualized in Jesus's teaching. So blood, salt has all these things. That tells you therefore that salt, what Jesus is saying, that we are, now we are the, we are the salt. If we are the salt, then we become those, we are agents. And Matthew is emphatic about it. He says, "You are the salt of the earth and light of the world." Let me just read to you what Mark says, how Mark puts this. The Gospel of Mark puts it this way, "For everyone who, everyone will be salted with fire." Salt is good, but if the salt has lost its saltness, how will you season it? Then he goes on to say, "Have salt in yourselves and be at peace with one another." Have salt. Now, he's just commanding them to make sure that they make themselves salt. That's what, that's how Mark puts it. But Matthew says, emphatically, "You are the salt of the earth." You are the salt of the earth. And that's, that's like, it covers all of that. It covers, "have salt in yourself," but it says that you are already. It's some kind of invitation to adopt that attitude in everywhere we find ourselves. You are agents of the earth. Now, remember, these are Jesus's followers, those who were following the Jesus movement. This is not even the church yet. This is not a church yet. There's no church yet. Okay? This is the band of people who left their homes and following Jesus and listening to him and have signed on to follow him wherever he went. We call it, we call it in biblical studies, the Jesus movement. So it says, "You are the salt of the earth." And by extension, that's all of us. We'll talk about that later. And then, and then in that very text, he says something about how we should try, or he warns us against losing our mojo. He don't want you to lose your mojo. Your Christian mojo is your salt. And that is what you are to the world. If you lose that, the world has lost, or the earth has lost something. So Jesus warns against becoming weak, becoming adulterated, becoming irrelevant. That's what many times, I mean, when people reject something that you tell them, sometimes it's not because, something, when we tell them something and they reject it, sometimes we have the tendency of saying, "Oh yeah, you are bad, you are evil, and you are rejecting Jesus Christ." But many times, it's not Jesus Christ they are rejecting. They are rejecting your brand of Jesus Christ, your understanding of Jesus Christ. They are rejecting that, not Jesus himself. Because we are, Jesus comes to other people through other people. It's always a sacramental thing, right? We call it a sacrament. This is why we have sacraments in the church. We all receive Jesus, we all receive God through the church. And that's the church, the church is a sacrament of Christ to us. That helps us to get Christ. So if the church becomes weak, becomes adulterated, becomes irrelevant, cannot speak to the issues of people in a meaningful way, and in a way that the word of God even mandates that we speak about, when we are bringing Christ, who is a merciful God, to people by means of force, the message is defeated. You cannot evangelize or bring Jesus to someone that you are oppressing. It's like the time of slavery, for instance. The slave masters were staunch Christians. They were Christians. These are the Christian people who are like, "Oh Jesus, they have Bible." And they were preaching to the slaves, but you know what? They were telling the slaves some, one thing, and doing another to them. Oppressing the same person that they are trying to sell Jesus to. That's a counter witness. So if you want to, if you want to bring the love of Christ and let someone experience Christ's love, you cannot condemn the person, or you cannot even, you cannot even think in your mind that the person is evil. You can't, because there's an intention. You might not do anything other, but if it is your intention, you're not going to be successful. We are not going to be successful in selling. In my home, there's a proverb that says, "Adipana tonu homum," which means, "A good merchandise sells itself." A good merchandise, a good merchandise doesn't need you to sell. It's already a testimony by itself. Okay? So let us, so this actually is making us not interfere with the goodness of the message of Jesus. We are salt, and therefore, but that saltness should not be irrelevant or adulterated. If it does that, it will be stopping the goodness of the merchandise that we are trying to bring across. We will be interfering into it. So that's Article 1. I think, I think, I think we should, this should be retained, and let's dig more into it. What is Article 1 of Christian Constitution? Our identity as salt of the earth, Matthew, chapter 5, verse 13. Then, the next one is Then, the next one is Article Two, it says, you are the light of the world. A salt of the earth and light of the world. Uh, this is still in the realm of our identity, okay? The identity of Christians, the identity of people who are being called to live the heavenly lifestyle, the Beatitudes, to live according to the Beatitude. Because this is our identity, this who we are, we are the light of the world. And this is found in Matthew chapter five, verse fourteen through sixteen. And so the other gospels, there, Mark chapter four, verse twenty-one. And Luke chapter eight, verse sixteen, talk about the same thing, light of the world. John says something about light of the world, but, but these are the, that's not too, that's not too helpful. These are clear, uh, they talk clearly about the light of the world. Now, we also have to consider the images of light then, in order to understand uh, uh, what Jesus is saying, that you are the light of the world. Uh, the images of light that we can, can help us to understand is, is, uh, the images are from Isaiah chapter two. Isaiah talks a lot in, so the prophet has talked about light, but they talked about light in relation to Israel. So, because Isaiah is in the Old Testament, uh, he was referring to not Jesus Christ. He was referring to Israel as the light of the nations, other nations, because Israel is a nation by itself. So Israel is a nation among nations, so what is Israel's purpose? I think some people have asked the question several times, why, why, why Israel? Why was Israel chosen and all that? Israel, because Israel was a nation like any other nation. But God chose Israel to use Israel. It's a free choice. It has nothing to do with the, the, uh, that Israel is better than another nation. Nothing Israel did warranted or warranted God to choose them. If it is that, then, then that means that you can actually yank something from God, and can force God. God's giving is not a free given then. It is conditioned, and nothing can condition God. So, so, so we cannot think that Israel did something that, that forced God to choose them. No, the choice of Israel was God's own free choice. And Israel, therefore, we can understand Israel as chosen not for Israel's purpose. The one who chose Israel freely, that one only can tell us why he chose Israel. And, and from our reflection, we came to find that Israel was chosen for this purpose. God has an intention to, to reach every nation. But chose Israel as a sample to use Israel to reach out to the rest of the nations. So Israel becomes the light of the world. So the purpose of a light, uh, we come to see, uh, the goal of, of lights. A light actually serves not itself. A light doesn't serve itself, a light shines so that other people are, uh, everything outside of the light will find the way, will fa, find the way and follow, okay? Let us, let us look at that reading also, it's very i- important to, to read that. Um, Matthew chapter five, verse fourteen through sixteen. You are the light of the world. A city set on a hill cannot be hidden. Nor do people light a lamp and put it under a bushel basket. But on a lampstand, they put it on a lampstand, and it gives light to all in the house. Let your light so shine before people that they may see your good deeds and give glory to your father who is in heaven. Let your light shine so that other people. You, you don't shine your light to feel good about yourself, no. You shine your light, but other people see your good deeds. And then, when they are going to give thanks, they don't give it to you. They give it to your heavenly father. You go do the work, but the glory is not for you, it's for, for God, okay? So, so that's the kind of way that God is going to use you and I. Now, not, not use in a way that, sometimes we use it in, in our, in our, in our talking. Uh, casual talking, where somebody's going, oh, you're using me, that's a negative one. I'm talking about being, being uh, 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 a hand, a, a kind of, an instrument of God that God uses. So, uh, so the, the, the light of the world is a very important image. You remember that the United States describes itself like that. A city on a hill? A city on a hill? Well, you better be ready, I mean, if you want to be a city on a hill, we want to be a Sorry, my Siri is trying to answer some questions for me. Um, if we want to be the city on a hill, well, we better, we can be a city on a hill. And then, when other people see the hills, see the city on a hill and they want to come, come back and come and join because they're interested in be, being part of it, then we say, oh, no, 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 you can't come here. No, you want to be a city on a hill. We have to be ready to introduce people, to help people to be good uh, people in this world of a nation, a nation that is prospering. People would like to be part of it. Anybody who would like to be part of it and contribute to it is welcome. Anybody who comes in and does some bad thing, well, yeah, fine, okay. Uh, uh, we do what we have to do. Uh, but anybody who would like to contribute to the city and make sure that the city's light is, is always up and bright. That person should be acceptable. And our laws have to respect that. A city on a hill, that's what we were, we described. And so the city on a hill in the Bible that you're talking about, in the Bible itself, it referred to Jerusalem. Jerusalem is built on a little city, there's a small, small hill, uh, there that is called Zion. There are a lot of people who have built houses on Zion already, so uh, you will even notice where. But Jerusalem is built there, so, so Jerusalem is that city. And it is the Israelites idea that, that one day, one day when the Messiah comes. Everybody in the whole world, you want to be saved, you have to literally go to Jerusalem. Everybody will flock to that mountain, that, that small hill. And learn Torah, Torah is the, is the, is the, is the law, uh. And learn that, and learn to relate, have a relationship with God. You want to have a relationship with God, you won't find it in Ghana, you won't find it in America, you won't find it. This is the Old Testament's perspective, this is the Israelite's perspective. But thanks be to Jesus, oh, you don't have to go there. You don't have to, it's a spiritual thing, and God is everywhere, God is right there in your room, in your house. You can have that relationship in the way you relate with your, with your spouses. The way you relate, and you start from there, your children, your environment, your people, you got it right here, uh, you got it right here. So, so that's the image of the light. Uh, so we have, we have the idea of salt and the idea of light, all of them talking about who we are uh, as agents and as people, uh, as important for the world. We are very significant, Christian, Christianity is not meant to serve itself. Our church is, is not meant to serve ourselves. Yes, we will continue to serve the members, I, I am here to serve, or we serve one another. But we do that also having in mind that we have to show that, we, I, we do that among ourselves in order to let other people know, uh, that other people may see, that's the light part of it. That other people may see it, and when they see it, they, they should lo, they will love to join us, they will love to praise God. When they see the way we love one another, okay? And so one of the songs we sang in the, in the, in the, uh, one of the songs we sang in the mission, we said, and they will know we are Christians by our love. The way we love one another, that's the way they will come to know that we are Christians. And the first time Christians were called Christians, it was what they were doing in Syria. Not even in Jerusalem, they were, they were not called Christians in Jerusalem. The first time they called them Christians, that was in Syria, in the northern north. Syria in Antioch, Antioch, Syria. And the, the people looked at them and they were like, these are the followers of Christ. But they look at the way they bonded together, they helped each other, the way they loved one another, the way they provided for each other. The way they make sure that no one lacks anything. And they said, these are Christ's followers. That's what made this way into a song, they will know we are Christians by our love, okay? So, that's Christianity, that's our church, we should look at ourselves like that. Uh, when we, we are here to serve humanity, humanity. Okay, and then, so Article Three therefore talks about, now, what are we talking, what, what, what is Jesus's law? What is the material Jesus is working on? What is Jesus's perspective of the Old Testament? What is Jesus's teaching? How should Christians see the Old Testament? Should they throw it away? Should, you don't have anything to do with that because Jesus brought, brought, Jesus brought ah, the fulfillment and make our head go big, oh yeah, we are Christian, we think. Do we think of ourselves better than, better than uh, uh, people in the Old Testament? Or even uh, uh, Judaism? So, many of us think so, many, many, many Christians think they are better than uh, uh, other religions. For a long time, Christian attitudes towards other religions has been very negative. But in the Second Vatican Council, we changed that, but it has not even caught on yet. Not, not even twenty percent of the, what Second Vatican Council teaches. We, have we practiced, we have not practiced twenty percent, just twenty percent. And I'm talking nineteen sixty-two, nineteen sixty-five, that long, and we have not done even twenty percent. Pope Francis is one of those popes who are bringing us to really read these things again and bring them up again. There's a lot of documents, one of the documents talks about Christian relations with other religions. You all heard about the Pope visited Iraq. And sat down with the chief, the chief uh, uh, Islamic leader and spoke with him. There's an inter, inter, inter-religious dialogue going on, going on. But people in the parishes are not being told these things. People in the parishes are not being, being brought to, to, to know that there's a lot of things that we can do with these other religions, okay? So, so uh, we will pick up that, that, that story, we'll pick up that title or, or topic another time. But for now, Jesus is teaching us how we should look at the Old Testament, the law and the prophets, okay? So the law and the prophets stand for that. I told you, the law and the prophets stands for the entire Old Testament, what we call Old Testament. But don't go to the, a fellow Jewish person and tell her old, no, 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 no. Uh, he or she will call you old, mister. Because you don't know the meaning of that, uh, you don't know that they don't have a new, something called a New Testament. So their only scripture is the law, the prophets and the writings. But like in the Bible, we always hear, we always hear the law and the prophets. Anytime you hear that, it is referring to the old law, well, it's the old covenant, it's the Old Testament. It's the old, and what it stands for, the Old Testament stands for that, Tanakh. I, 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 I remember that I, I mentioned this when we were talking about, uh, when we were talking about the beginning, about everything about the Bible. Tanakh stands for, the TA is Torah. Torah is the first five books of Moses, Genesis, Exodus, Leviticus, Numbers, Deuteronomy. Those are the, the, the five books of Moses. That's Torah, TA is Torah, okay? And NA is uh, uh, the word, Hebrew word, Navi, Navim, Navim. N-A-V-I-I-M, Navim. Navim means prophets, but that's Hebrew. Prophet came from Greek, prophetess, okay? The Greek call it prophetess, but the Hebrew is Navim, Navim. N-A-V-I-M or I-I-M, it depends on how you pronounce it. But Navim, and one prophet is Nabi, N-A-B-I, okay? So NA stands for prophets. All the prophetic books in the Bible are in this section, okay? The second section of the Old Testament, of the Hebrew Bible, okay? And the last one, KH stands for Ketuvim, Ketuvim. But Ketuvim is a Hebrew word that means writings. And that has to do with the Psalms, the historical books and all the histories that you find in the Bible. Proverbs, uh, the wisdom books, all of them are called writings, they're called the writings. So that's the third section of the Old Testament, Ketuvim, K-E-T-U-V-I-M. So that's the writing, so Tanakh is a, is a, an acronym that we use in biblical study, when we are studying the Bible. Tanakh is what we use to remember the sections of the Hebrew Bible, okay, the Old Testament. There are three sections, the law, the prophets and the writings. Torah, Navim, Ketuvim, okay? So Jesus was commenting on that, because that's what the, the Christians used, those test, those books, okay? So Jesus said, at the, at, at this point, he says, I do not think that I have come to abolish the law and the prophets. I have come not to abolish, but to fulfill, but what does it mean to fulfill? So Jesus says that I have come to fulfill, uh, the, I have come to fulfill what Jesus was saying. For now, what I would tell you is, he came to clarify. Deepen and clarify and expand and, 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 and bring out the spirit, the intention. Because those laws were given to them with no reason, some of them, some of them have no reason, I shall not do this. Why? So Jesus now is going to provide the reasons, is going to tell you why, and then I saw that somehow you too can participate in it by trying to, oh, okay, if this is the way, then maybe I can do it better by doing this. I don't have to do the same thing that somebody did, uh, three thousand, four thousand years ago. I got iPad today, he didn't have iPad. Okay, so if I know, all I want to know is to know the intention. And when I know the intention, then I'm going to be creative and bring the iPad to work with this and, and that becomes a different thing. That I might be able to, to, to get my blessings, I call Father Kwame and, and on, on Zoom, and then Father Kwame can bless me. I can get my blessing through, through computers. Yes, you can. Yes, you can. We don't have to get stuck to, to, to some of the materiality of the, of the past. It is a spiritual thing. It is God who is working. And God can reach through anything. You can be under the sea, God can reach you. And we say that all the time. When we go to mass, we say that all the time. Lord, I am not worthy that you should come under my roof. Don't come here, I don't need your physical presence. You are God. I don't need you here physically. You are a spirit. Last Sunday, we read that in the, in the, Jesus meeting the Samaritan woman. We read that God is spirit. And everyone who worships God must worship God in spirit and in truth. So I don't need you here. So just speak, just speak. And all the evil spirits will be running away from my, in my home. I am thousands of miles away, but you, you, you speak, just speak, and they will run away. That's, that's, that's our faith. This is very important, that Jesus is trying to, uh, 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 bring out the intentions. The Old Testament is filled with a lot of materiality. War is a material thing. When they say war in the Old Testament, it is actually going to war and killing people. War in the New Testament is not going to kill somebody. It is rather trying to, to teach people to change their mindset. That's what war is. The war is a spiritual battle now, not, not going to, to be annoyed with somebody and kill somebody and eliminate somebody. No, 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 no. That's not war. That is, that is, you are living, we will be living in the, in the, in the, uh, four thousand years. Now, if you say you are, uh, the Christian life is a battle. The battle is not going to take other people's lives and, and to go and go kill or, or eliminate some people who don't believe like us. No. Not to, not to do harm or hate them or do, no. The battle is continue to clarify our position, continue to talk about it, continue to discuss, continue to live. In fact, many times, many times even also, we don't live our, our own laws, our own conviction. We don't live it. And then we are going to, we want to teach some, we want to force other people to be like, nah. That's not going to happen. Sometimes you don't have to teach. Sometimes you teach by just go up, go about your duty, living yours, living, practicing yours. That's all it takes. And somebody sees it and says, oh, you know what? I want some of what you have. Let them come for it. Let them be convinced first. Okay. So that's very important. That's how we should relate with the Old Testament. The Old Testament is still, is still good. We, Jesus still is using it. But we have to, we have to translate it, we have to interpret it. We have to break it down. We have to season it with our salt. We have to shed our light on it. Then it can be useful in twenty twenty-one. It can be useful in twenty-one. If you bring it, if you bring it right there from, uh, uh, the old and bring it like that and hitting people with it, you know what? It will become irrelevant. People don't need it. They are not interested. And that's where we, we become irrelevant. We lose our mojo, we lose our saltiness. So then he goes on to say, heaven and earth will pass away. You know? We say heaven and earth will pass away. He's talking about the full lifestyle of Jesus. Okay. The full lifestyle of Jesus, the Beatitudes, will take over. That's what it means that heaven and earth will pass away. Heaven and earth passing away is that, is that the, 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 the present lifestyle which is not perfect, that will see, uh, uh, seize. But, but right now, heaven and earth is not passing away because the Beatitudes, uh, the law, the Beatitudes, has not taken over yet. He says, uh, uh, heaven and earth will pass away, but my, uh, not, not, heaven and earth will not pass away until these things take place. That is, that is the Beatitude. When God is, is live perfectly, uh, that's when heaven and earth, uh, uh, will pass away. So, so even the smallest letter and all that letter, and now there are some people think that is the, is the English word letter I that they are talking about. Nah, 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 nah. It's not the, it's not the right thing that they're talking about. They're talking about the constitution we are talking about. Love of God, love of neighbor, you don't do anything less. Not even anything less from love. Love has to be perfect. Love has to be perfect. That's what, that's what he's talking about. This text is calling or inviting us to activate the Beatitude. Actually, this is what Jesus is teaching, to activate the Beatitudes in our lives. It's an invitation, uh, uh, for us to do that. And then finally, he talks about, uh, the scribes and Pharisees. The scribes and Pharisees are the, the, the folks who were, who were practicing, who were practicing the old law, uh, who were actually devoted to the old law. The scribes and Pharisees were very religious people. However, the problem is that they were a little fishy with it. Okay. Uh, the scribes are the ones who, who copied the word of God. They like, they like writing things. They, some of them were the sacred writers of the books of the Bible. That's what they call the scribes. They are writers, they are like journalists. And then, and then the scribes, they write the law. So sometimes when they make the law, they try to write it in a way that will, will put burden on poor people, people who cannot even read. They will put burden on them, but they themselves don't do it. So the Pharisees, um, uh, are the ones who are more legalistic and, and they are very traditional. They are like, yeah, the Bible says this, the Bible says this. When we interpret that, that does not refer so much to persons anymore. What I refers to is some ways of living the law, ways of living the law. How do you take law? How do you take the law? The law of God is not to be, to be used to beat people up. So their ways of living the law is a legalistic way, it's a literalist, literal. Not everybody can read and write. There are many religions that don't have books. We are part of the religion of the book, but there are many religions that don't have a book at all. They are oral, they are practice, everything is practice. The way they live their life is their religion. From morning till night, everything they are doing is religious. If they go to sit in the car, their car, they do some, something. If there are anything they do, they, they, uh, they're going to drink water, they pour a little on the ground and, and they drink. Everything is religious. They, they, that's traditional, uh, uh, people. But literalists are people who are like that and nothing else. I mean, what you see is what you get. Theoretical, uh, theoretical theory, they kind of explain, but then they don't do it. There's no practice to it. There's nothing practical, uh, out there. Pigeonholing, uh, everything is like cookie cutter, nothing, there's no intersections. Okay. Non-realistic interpretation of the law. They interpret the law in a way that is not realistic at all. I mean, that is like, that puts burden on the people to carry. There is no practice. Okay. And, and so Jesus's way is, is what I would call justice because it ties into what we said last Sunday. Jesus's way is justice and justice is practicing theory and practice. So theory is needed, but it has to go with practice. Theory and practice is what in culture studies, uh, and other, uh, studies we call praxis. It, praxis is not ju- you can't have even practice by itself. You can't just practice without, without the intention, without the explanation. That would be, that would be robot. Practice without theory is robotic. And, and theory without practice is empty. It's empty theory. It has no effect, it's irrelevant. So you need praxis. You need theory plus practice. Okay. So that's, that's, uh, this is, this is, this is how Jesus, uh, taught hi- hi- his people and according to Matthew and prepared them for what he's going to say. So you're going to see that he is now going to, to, to take, he's going to work in anti, antithesis, uh, uh, formula. So he's going to take something from the past and then upgrade it and tell you what he, he is teaching about that today. How we should look at that. So he said, you have heard it was said to your ancestors, I shall not kill. But I say to you, okay, so then he goes on to intimate and deepen and explain that. I say to you is a new way to, to look at it. So you'll be comparing the old teaching and the new teachings. Okay. That's what we're going to do next Thursday. Okay. So I'm going to stop it here and, uh, if there is a, if there's no question. Okay, no, no questions right there. But please, uh, prepare yourself by reading Matthew, chapter five, verse twenty-one through forty-eight. I think that would be too long, but try to finish it and, and, and be ready, uh, uh, for our next. Thank you very much and God bless all of you and give you a great, great night. Mike, good to see you from.